Welcome to the 2022 Hastings Public School Board Candidate Forum. I'm Ben Welsh, President of the Hastings Education Association. On behalf of the HEA, thank you for being with us tonight for our public forum. There are eight community members running to fill four seats on the Hastings Public School Board of Education. We invited all eight candidates to join us so that you, the Hastings community, could hear each of the candidates' responses to the selected questions. We are grateful to the following candidates who accepted our invitation. They are Shay Burke, Jody Graves, Andrew McCarty, Mark Montague, Brady Rhodes, Becky Sullivan, and Stacy Woodham. David Hughes is absent but was able to have a representative give his opening and closing remarks tonight. We do have a few announcements before we begin. Our thanks to the Hastings Public Access for recording our public forum and it hopefully will be accessible and broadcast throughout the coming month of October, all the way to the election day. During the forum, please be respectful of the candidates and silence or turn off your electronic devices, and please don't use them during the forum. Also, please abstain from clapping after a candidate's response as we want to give the next candidate their turn and for our moderator to be able to ask the next question. Speaking of the moderator, it's my privilege to turn our public forum over to our moderator, Mr. Craig Kautz. Please help me in thanking him for his time and commitment to our forum for this evening.
Welcome all. As Ben indicated, my name is Craig Kautz. I'm the Executive Director of the Hastings Public Schools Foundation, and I am honored to serve as the moderator for tonight's candidate forum. To my knowledge, this is the only school board candidate forum prior to the general election vote on November 8th. The forum requires all candidates to follow the same format and to answer the same questions. Each candidate will be allowed a two-minute opening statement. Each candidate will be asked the same four questions. Each candidate is to limit his or her response to the question to two minutes. Each question will be asked in a random order in an attempt to eliminate any advantage a static order might provide. Each candidate will be allowed a two-minute statement to bring this forum to a close. As moderator, I am the only person who will ask questions tonight, and the questions that have been provided to me will be the only questions I will ask. I do have the ability to clarify a question should a candidate ask for such clarification. Our timer tonight for the forum is Jade Bartunik, the current Vice President of the Hastings Education Association. Would you please welcome her for her time? There will be two cards to help candidates to stay within the two-minute time limitation. A yellow card will indicate when 30 seconds are left in a candidate's time to respond. A red card signifies that the candidate must halt their response. However, candidates, you will be allowed to finish the last sentence of your response should time run out on you. Candidates, do you have any questions? Let us begin. We will have opening statements, starting with Mr. Brady Rhodes.
Thank you, Craig. Thanks for moderating and thanks for the HEA for providing this and hosting. I get to be the first one to say that, so really appreciate that and really appreciate everybody for being here. It takes a lot of commitment to come to a forum. You have the opportunity to do lots of other things, so really appreciate you being here and taking your time and encourage you to spread the word after being here tonight. I want to tell you why I am running for school board and show you a little bit about myself. I've been involved in education for 30 years. I've been a teacher, I've trained teachers, I've developed curriculum, I've been part of programs through multiple different countries that work in different educational environments. And so that educational environment and creating that environment is really important to me. It's important to me because I have two kids in school, an eighth grader and a 10th grader. I have an older student that graduated from the Denver Public Schools. So I've been involved in lots of different educational situations, and we've really been grateful for what Hastings has provided. So I love being able to be involved in the process of education, which means supporting the schools, supporting the school districts, supporting the staff, and most of all, having the kids and the students' priorities at heart. I wanted to let you know I was on the school board previously for six years. I stepped off the school board to be able to travel internationally with our family, which was an important piece for us, and really glad to be able to come back here to participate in the school board in this process. My role is to be qualified, well-informed, represent the views of the constituency here, and really support students in the best interest of the schools. I think I'd also just share, I have a master's in experiential education, and as part of that piece, it's all about what does it take to create a great learning environment? So when I think about Hastings Public Schools and the environment that my students, my two sons, have been able to be a part of, I love to see what gets created here. And when I was on the school board, what I get to be able to support, I think, is a key piece for me. So as a school board member, we don't get to start a lot of things, but we get to keep a lot of things in motion. And so that kind of thing is a really key piece for me that I'm glad to be a part of. Thank you.
Becky Sullivan's opening statement.
I'm not as good at extemporaneous speaking as this guy is, so I'm going to go ahead and read my statement. Good evening, everyone. Thanks again to the HEA for hosting and everyone for coming. I'm Becky Sullivan. I am a wife to Kelly and mother to Sydney and Trevor. Both of my kids graduated from Hastings High and are now currently attending college. My husband Kelly and I own Kelly's Alignment and Breaks, and I also am employed as the Wellness Manager at Mary Lanning Healthcare, and I've been there for a little over 20 years now. I've been on numerous boards and committees throughout the community, and I know what it's like to be a part of a highly functioning board and a highly functioning organization. I want to continue to be part of Hastings Public Schools Board for that very reason. I've served on this board for the last eight years, and it's been a pleasure to do so. Hastings Public Schools has so much to be proud of, and the staff of this organization are the reason why. As with any organization, there are always things to be improved upon, but there is so much good that has happened over my last eight years. I enjoy being part of the board that has disagreements and different thought processes on difficult decisions, but we have always been civil and thoughtful of each other and recognize that each member is doing what they think is best for kids and staff. I would very much like to be elected for another term and continue to join in the effort to help take Hastings Public to new levels of achievement.
Mark Montague, your opening statement.
Well, again, thank you all for coming out here. It's just great to see a turnout of folks. Again, making the commitment to be out here, so welcome, appreciate you making it out. My name is Mark Montague, and my family and I, we moved to Hastings in 2009, so we're relatively new to the community area. I've been married for 21 years, and we've been blessed to have three kids, and then we have a daughter-in-law as well, a new addition to the family last year. Two of our children had graduated from Hastings High, and our third is a freshman at Hastings High. We've been involved in a lot of youth activities from music, theater, sports, debate, lots of other extracurricular activities, and a lot of it is volunteering, local church, coaching youth sports, doing theater activities. And I'm also currently an active board member with the Flat Valley Youth for Christ. So our family, we love our hands-on commitment to serving and assisting with local foster care through Respite. We also volunteer with Royal Family, excuse me, Hastings Royal Family Kids Camp, and we've got participation as well a lot with the Juvenile Justice Ministry, a local ministry here in town. I think we're awfully blessed as Americans to be able to have an opportunity and a privilege to be involved in the election process, so that's why I'm excited to be a candidate for Hastings Public School Board. Our involvement with youth, I've seen a lot of things amongst kids that have changed, an increase in anxiety and depression and immorality, a lack of hope that many youth seem to struggle with, and I think the influence and the relationship that the public schools have and the communities have, as well as the families have in the lives of these youth, play a vital role. And that's why I've decided to run for school board, so thank you again.
Would Mr. David Hughes' representative please come forward? We will not start your time until you start your presentation.
Going to owe me a lot of coffee for this. I would like to thank the other candidates and those in attendance this evening for taking the time to be here tonight. I apologize for not being in person as a work commitment has me in Dallas-Fort Worth. I am David Hughes, and I am seeking an election to the Hastings Public School Board and would like to thank Jed for reading the statement. He left out devilishly handsome. Anyways, my desire and passion to serve on the school board is twofold. First, I grew up in a family where my parents both worked in the public school systems, so I was able to see firsthand the impact a teacher can have in a child's life. My belief in importance of public schools has been further galvanized by the impact I've seen my wife, Alicia, make in her 11 years with Hastings Public Schools and the impact Watson Elementary staff has made in the life of our seven-year-old son who has special needs. Secondly, I have a desire to be an advocate for Hastings Public Schools and students as I believe there are several significant issues facing our public schools in the near future, and I hope to foster an effective collaboration among the school board administrators and staff. Issues such as critical race theory, health and sexual education standards, student preparedness, and teacher workload are most concerning to me. My 20 years in banking and management, combined with my community involvement in the areas of organization, will be an asset to this board. I have the ability to not only see but understand multiple viewpoints on this topic. I vow to bring an open mind and objectivity to the board, and I will bring a focus on healthy, student-centered decision-making, which is collaborative and transparent while being procedurally and fiscally sound. The financial health of our public schools is an ongoing priority, and I am confident my financial background would pay dividends. I'm assuming pun intended. As the public schools' mission says, our fundamental purpose is to ensure all students acquire the knowledge and skills and behaviors essential individuals and responsible citizens. I think Bob Talgar was right when he said teaching a child to count is fine, but teaching them what counts is best. I want to do my best to assist the Hastings Public Schools to continue teaching kids on what counts and thereby accomplishing its mission in developing successful and responsible citizens. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Andrew McCarty, your opening statement.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the Hastings Education Association for hosting this event and all of you who are here tonight. Your civic engagement reaffirms to me just why I'm running for a board position with Hastings Public Schools. This process is foundational to the stability of our district, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here with all of you. For those of you who may not already know me, I'm Andrew McCarty, a Registered Nurse and Program Coordinator at Mary Lanning Healthcare, where I've worked for the past nine years. I hold bachelor's degrees in Biology and Nursing and am currently enrolled in a Family Nurse Practitioner Program through Clarkson College. Prior to working in healthcare, I taught middle school and high school science in both parochial and public schools, including one semester at Hastings Middle School. I also spent six years coaching at Hastings High School and was one of the earliest volunteers at the HMS Community Garden when the idea became reality a decade ago. My wife Courtney, a Hastings native and graduate of HPS, has taught math in the community for the past 11 years, nine of which were with Hastings Public Schools. We have two kind and curious kids at home, our three-year-old daughter Pierce. I don't want to get emotional, but... And our almost two-year-old son Crew. They love reading books, watching Daniel Tiger, riding around town in the bike trailer, picking produce at the HMS Garden, and visiting Miss Deb at the Children's Museum. I love being their dad. The community of Hastings is important to me. That's where I've called home for the past 12 years and where my wife and I are raising our family. And as a parent of children who will attend Hastings Public Schools one day, I want to ensure that our school board continues the work of assuring the essential and expanding the possible, and I firmly believe that the work of Hastings will depend on your continued support for public education. I look forward to answering questions, and thank you again for being here.
Jody Graves, your opening statement.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. Again, thank you to the HEA for organizing, and thank you to the other candidates that are here with us. My name is Jody Graves. I'm a current Hastings Public School Board Education Member. I'm an Executive Director, a community volunteer, a wife, but most importantly, I'm a mom. My husband Danny and I have two kids. Jackson's a senior at Hastings High, and Madeline's a fifth grader at Longfellow. My husband and I are both actively involved in the school system as well as in the community. As a mom of two children in the HPS school system, I care deeply about the educational experiences that they receive. I want to ensure that all kids are given the opportunity and the tools to thrive in their education. Every decision I make as a current HPS Board of Education Member is personal, as it directly impacts my own kids. More importantly, as a board member, I have a responsibility to base my decisions on what is in the best interest for the 3,600 students and 550 staff members of HPS. One of the questions that I get asked most often is what issue am I campaigning on? My experience serving on the HPS Board has taught me that education is about more than just a single issue. Education is about our kids, our staff, and our community. If you asked a grade school student, a high school student, and a community member to discuss the most important issue about education, you'd get three unique and valid responses, and that's amazing. The most critical function I can play as a board member is to ensure that I'm listening and responding to the needs of all of those audiences by looking at any issue that comes up with an open mind. Thanks again to the HEA for coordinating. I look forward to tonight's discussion.
Shay Burke.
Hi, my name is Shay Burke, and I recognize a lot of you in the audience, some of you I don't. For those of you who may know me or know my name and wonder where you know me from, I spent 15 years as a reporter at the Hastings Tribune, and in that time, 10 years of that time was as the education reporter. I covered stories for Hastings Public Schools, Adam Central, St. Cecilia, Hastings College, CCC, Kennesaw, Silver Lake, the Lutheran Elementary Schools. I've been there. Just at Hastings Public Schools Board of Education in a decade, I covered more than 250 school board meetings. That doesn't mean I came in for 10 minutes at my piece in life. I was there for the beginning to the end of every meeting. I saw what board members are expected to do. I could probably repeat the board norms if anyone would like to hear them. I know what the responsibilities of board members are. I know what they can and can't do. I've seen some amazing things in my time in this community. We are blessed to have an awesome public school system. I have three kids of my own, two who are currently in school, Anna, a third grader, and Ben, a kindergartner, both at Hawthorne, and an 18-month-old who in a few years will hopefully be attending the awesome new Morton Early Education Center. I see the schools daily. I talk with staff members at the school. I talk with kids at school. Like I said, we have an amazing school system with so many successes every day, and we have challenges too. But my focus is to ensure that we are providing the best we can for every kid in our district. I'm really excited to see that most of the candidates on the ballot are here tonight, and I'm ready for an awesome forum. Thank you.
Stacy Woodham, your opening statement.
Okay, going last means that I had lots of things that I'm like, ah, why didn't I write? I should have wrote that about myself. But I'm sticking to what I wrote, and it will probably be 29 seconds. But I'm Stacy Woodham. I have been a resident pretty much all my life here in Hastings, except for a short time that I moved down to Dallas. I have three daughters that have gone through, my oldest has graduated from Hastings High, and my other two, I have a senior, and then I have a third grader over at Watson Elementary. Go Wildcats! Let's see, just going into who I am as a person and a mother. I am a mother. I am a law-abiding citizen. I believe that we should follow the Constitution and our country. I love our country. I love where we live. I love the freedoms that we have here. I am a follower of Christ. I very much value our public schools and all it has to offer. My girls have had amazing experiences at the schools so far, and I look forward to being part of, you know, adding to those experiences and the students that will follow afterwards. I respect our teachers, especially after COVID. They are amazing as well. I believe that we need to listen more to them and where they are coming from because they're the ones that are there with our students, and yeah, I just respect them above a lot. Let's see, I believe that we have amazing parents in our school districts, and I believe that they also need to be, oh, gosh, I made it, 30 seconds left. I believe that, you know, we need to respect them as well and know that they have rights in raising their kids. Above all, our students is what matter because they are our future.
Thank you, candidates. While we will go in order, we will start each question from a different position. So while this may seem complicated, it's really not. The first question starts with Andrew McCarty. And here is the question. Describe two or three attributes or behaviors you possess that make you the best candidate for the Hastings Public Schools Board of Education.
Oh, gosh, Becky, I have to talk about strengths. Okay, all right, sounds good. So I work, as I said, for Mary Lanning Healthcare. We're a Gallup strengths-based organization, so what that means is all of the staff has the opportunity to take the Gallup Strengths Assessment, and then we get to meet with wellness coaches, and it's very much ingrained in the culture of Mary Lanning, which is great to see. So throughout the process of learning about my own strengths, I have them actually typed out here, so my top strengths, though, are achiever, learner, significance, analytical, and competition. And to boil that down for everybody that may not understand what those exactly mean is I'm a go-getter. I like to be busy. I like to learn. I'm curious. I like to do things that are of high significance. So making decisions on behalf of lots of people does not scare me because I want to make a big impact doing what I do. I've been the stroke program coordinator at the hospital for the last eight years. I've taken on other coordinator roles within the hospital. I've worked on different committees. I've had to work with people that I definitely don't agree with, and that's okay, as long as we can come to some consensus and, you know, like I think Becky had mentioned, just working with different people is really important. And so I've had a lot of experiences in my own work life, and then I also serve, I didn't mention this in the opening statement, but I also serve on the Hastings Public Library Board. That's something that I've done for the last couple of years as well. I'm really passionate about youth literacy, family literacy. But to get back to my strengths really quick, I am a very analytical person. I'm a numbers person. Jody and I were talking just right before this started. I love reading spreadsheets. That sounds extremely dorky to some people, but I love data. That's what I do in my job. I work in process improvement in the Quality Department, so we evaluate lots of different data points to try and improve on what we're already doing that's well.
Jody Graves. I'll repeat the question if you want me to, or just go fire it.
I think I'm good. Thank you. As Andrew said, we could get together sometime and compare spreadsheets because I love a good, I love some good data. One of my top ones is, while I don't have the Strengths Finders things, although Becky, we should all do that, analytical is definitely at the top of my list. I want to see the data behind things. I want to see all of the reasons that we're doing things so that we can make an informed decision about whatever the topic might be. I'm very level-headed. I can remove drama from topics and look at things from, again, that analytical side without looking at the drama part of it. And then also, from a professional standpoint, as an Executive Director, I actually work with a Board of Directors, and so I'm used to working with that structure, working with a high-functioning board. I know what that looks like, how to help lead that, and that, I think, goes a long ways in helping make progress possible.
All right, well, I'm going to go with my Strengths Finders. Here we go. So, all right, my number one is input. I love information. I want all of the information you can give me. Send me your favorite book. Send me your favorite article. I want all the information. And I'm going to take that information, and I'm going to analyze it, and I'm going to look it over, and I'm going to read it all over before I make a decision because I don't want to have half the information when I make my decision. So give me all those school board packets full of information and presentations. I want all of it. And my second one is empathy, and I believe that part of my empathy is that I'm a really good listener. Being a reporter, you listen. That's what you do. You listen, observe. I want to be able to sit down and talk with parents about their concerns, about if their kids are struggling, if their kids are having successes. I want to sit and talk with our teachers and our staff about what is going great, what is not going great, so that I can then help, you know, if there's a way, I can help to change that, to make that better. But even if it's just sitting and listening, at the end of the day, I think that that's all a lot of people need, is just to have someone listen to them.
Stacy.
Let's see, I am going to go, I've not done Strengths Finders, but I'm going to go with, I work well with others. In the, I've been in, had a business for 14 years, and in that time, I guess I just had to learn how to work with the women that I was working with, but then, I would go with another one, another Strength Finder, or another strength. But I just know how to ask the right questions, understand where they're coming from, and then, you know, come to a decision on like where the plan's going to, where we are going to go in a plan. Another one is I ask a lot of questions. I'm not afraid because if I don't know the answers, then I've had parents in the first part of the elections, you know, coming to me with questions, and I'm like, oh, you know, there's going to be so many issues that we do not even know that they are issues, and to be able to turn around and ask the parents or the teachers or the citizens of Hastings, what do they really mean? And to clarify so you know where to even begin to research is, I think that's a strength. So I'm good at asking questions, and then I'm good at going and researching what they're actually asking. And then I'm going to go with Shay as well, empathy. I am, again, a great listener. I can understand and see different perspectives on where people are coming from, and then just kind of like, where are we going to find a solution for these? So work well with others, ask questions, research, and empathy.
Brady Rhodes, you are next.
Thank you. My role and one of my jobs is the collaborative coordinator for the Community Impact Network. So one of my strengths is collaboration. It's something I get to use all the time, and I love it. It's an opportunity to see where are the gaps, where are the intersections, where are things where people can connect the dots and play to each other's strengths, as well as identify the things that we're not so good at, and then look and see, how can we morph that and build on that? So collaboration's a strength of mine. The second would be curious. I was guilty, but in a good way, I think, of asking lots of questions at past school board meetings, and I'll continue to do that. One of my favorite times with being a school board member was being able to go and visit the schools, and sometimes we would just do that off the cuff, but sometimes it would be assigned, and it was a great opportunity to just get into a building and ask questions of the principals or the content teachers and sit with them and listen and really figure out what are the things that I don't know that I can be more informed about and then be able to represent back to the community. So that'd be my second. And then my third, I was going to say systems thinker, but what I really want to share with you is I feel like a third quality would be humane. I think we're in a really complex time, and I think it's a difficult time to get to really easily lose sight of what's in front of us. But what's always in front of us is the human beings in the equation. So I'm human-centered. I pull that into all the thinking that I do with people. How can we make this community, this incredibly complex thing that's very difficult sometimes, how can we make this work? So humane would be my third quality.
Becky?
Well, since I am a certified strengths coach, I'm probably going to pull strengths into this also. So I'm going to go with one of my strengths is maximizer. And maximizers like to take things that are already good and make them awesome! And I think really, like, I've been on the board for eight years, and when I came on, things were already good at Hastings Public. And I think, you know, in the course of my time, we've added a lot to that, a lot of layers, and I think we're continually striving for awesome. We're never going to be at that point, and I like being a part of that. I like being able to help contribute to making Hastings Public the best it can possibly be. I also have high learner. I'm a lifelong learner. I love to learn things. I don't get as jazzed about spreadsheets as some of my counterparts here, so if you're wanting data and analytics, I'm probably not your gal, but if I need to learn about it, you know, that's definitely something that I do when I need to. But I do like to, I like to research. I like to see best practice. I like to read about those kinds of things with how we can improve our systems as well. The last one I'm going to go with is one of my strengths is self-assurance, and I think having been on the board already for eight years, that definitely helps to contribute to that strength. I'm pretty well-versed in a lot of the things at Hastings Public. I will agree with Brady. I think it's amazing when we can get into the classrooms because that does really help us to see what we're doing at the board level and how that translates down into the classroom, how it impacts teachers, how it impacts kids. And I feel like I can come to board meetings and make well-informed decisions and stand by my decisions and have the confidence to proceed and to represent the school and the community, and again, just help make Hastings Public as awesome as it can possibly be.
And Mark.
All right, so never done Strength Test, so I'm going to have to check into that, but yeah, I think my... But yeah, I think my, I think my biggest strength is I'm a born-again believer in Jesus Christ, and because I have that as my worldview, I truly care about people with the compassion that I believe our Lord calls us to. And I think of all these conversations that we can have and all our strengths, to me, the greatest thing that I think I can contribute is that I care about everyone individually, not just my own kids, not just children, board members, the community, taxpayers, but just I have that compassion for people. Using those strengths, I guess, the ways that I do that, I'm a big communicator. I'm a people person. I love to listen. I love to talk. I love to have conversation. I think that we need to value other people's opinions. We need to value the conversation and the communication. I think we've lost a little bit of dialogue capability in our culture today, and so I think that's an important thing. I've heard a lot of that, and I'm excited to hear. But I would echo that as well. I do like to engage in that process of listening and communicating and talking and just having patience with other people to hear those different perspectives. And some of the different things that we've served with in the community, it just gives us an opportunity, or it's given me an opportunity to recognize that not everybody has the same upbringing, background, experiences. And all those things play a vital role in who people are and how they think, and I think it's important that we get to know people and listen to them. So those would be my strengths, I guess, since we have two or three. The third one, I've been a business owner for a number of years. I did a lot of construction management, hail restoration work. I've worked with different people groups, insurance companies, contractors, homeowners, and so forth. And it's just given me, I guess, a different perspective to be able to not only look at finances and budgets, I don't necessarily know if I love spreadsheets, but I don't mind going through them. And I think it's important that we're fiscally conservative and that we're wise with the taxpayers' dollars, so.
Mark, we're actually going to stay with you. Question two. If you are elected to the Hastings Public Schools Board of Education, what issues or needs would have your highest priority?
Yeah. So along those same lines, I think communication is probably the biggest thing from the school board meetings that I've attended and from a lot of the interactions that I've had with communities since putting my name in the hat to be in the election process. I think the communication is a big issue. I think we need to hear the voices of not only parents and taxpayers and teachers and administrators, but I think we need a community involvement. The old adage, you know, it takes a community to raise a child. I don't know if that's always 100% true, but I think there's a lot of value in that. And so I think that is a big issue for me, is just communication. One of the things I answered, if you read the HEA questionnaire, was talking about a school board meeting where there was a decision that had been made with not a lot of input from teachers and staff and parents and taxpayers and community members. And I think those things are valuable. I think it's behoof of us to listen to those. And again, I love to hear the fact that we've got ideas coming from wanting to have that communication. So I think that's a big thing. I think the other thing is fiscal responsibility. I think we see a lot of our own households that we have to live in a budget. We have to live within our means. And I don't think we see a lot of government doing that. And I don't want to pick on any in particular entity by any means, but I think that we need to be responsible with the dollars that we have. I know I work hard for the money that we make. I know that probably everybody here would say the same thing. Each of you would say the same thing, and we need to be responsible with those things. I think it's this idea of third, I've got to watch my time, third-party giving, you know, where it's not your money and you don't care what's purchased. If I've got somebody else's money and I'm buying something for Brody, I don't really care, Brady, sorry. I don't really care what that is. So I can go buy an eight-foot green frog with Becky's money and give it to him. I don't really care. But when we start having a vested interest and we start seeing those dollars that we earn and the dollars that we spend as being valuable, I think that's a huge role that we need to look into, so financial responsibility.
Andrew, you're next to answer the question.
So some of the priorities that I have on my RAC card that some people have probably seen or read, one of the number-one things is recruitment and retention of teachers. We have great teachers in this district. My wife was a teacher in this district. We know, we're friends with teachers. There's teachers here tonight. There's a student back there. Kellen is here tonight. Thank you for being here. But we just have great people within this organization, and we need to be able to recruit great people to this organization and retain them. The two things I was going to mention regarding that is our teacher workforce is highly experienced and highly educated. So on average, this district employs teachers with an average years of experience of about 15 years, which is above the state average, and about 65% of those teachers have master's degrees. So we have teachers that have stayed here for a while, and they're very well-educated. Now, those teachers aren't going to be here forever. They're eventually going to retire. We've also seen a lot of teachers leaving the profession, and there are fewer teachers entering into teacher education programs at the college level. So that's challenge number one, recruitment and retention of teachers. One of the other issues also is obviously mental health of students, staff, and teachers. The last, you know, almost three years now has been difficult on everybody. Students, for sure. Parents, absolutely. Teachers, you bet. I don't think that we recognize just how much teachers put into their profession sometimes. And it's taken a toll on their mental health. And so I think we need to improve upon and expand mental health services for students, teachers, and staff, build upon existing career pathway programs, and implement new career pathway programs in the district, I would think would be very helpful in partnering with area agencies and institutions. And the last thing I would say is that we have financial challenges that I think we have done an absolutely amazing job on addressing those problems from the board level all the way down.
Jody.
The number-one thing that will always be on my list is staffing. 85% of our total budget goes to staffing. It's a well-known fact that that is, there's a shortage of that, not just in our district but across the state and across the country. We have amazing staff in our staff right now. How do we make sure that we are keeping them, retaining them, and attracting new staff? So again, when 85% of our total budget goes to staff, that has to be a top priority. And then second of all, our fiscal responsibility, our finances, ensuring that we're being as responsible and efficient with those as we possibly can.
All right. I'm going to try to make this quick. First of all, recruit and retain. I'll give an example. My daughter's second-grade teacher at Hawthorne last year, she actually had two teachers. Her one teacher is a longtime teacher in the district who was pursuing a new degree in counseling to become a school counselor. So the district allowed her to teach half-time in her second-grade class, which was shared with another teacher, so that she could pursue that. And this year, she is now in another building being a counselor. We kept our staff and allowed our staff to grow, which is amazing. We need to continue to do that, things like that, to allow our staff to grow in a way that benefits them and benefits the district. Second, my daughter has a new teacher this year, new, fresh out of college. How do we work to foster her and the other new teachers so that they want to stay here, so that they can see the benefits of the school district and continue to grow here? Second of all, mental health. I say this because I've seen it personally with my own child. I know that our school board has worked very hard to provide mental health services for our students and our staff. I've seen them spend hours trying to figure out how to provide those services, where to get the money, where to get the grants. And it's hard. It's hard because the other thing to realize is we talk about fiscal responsibility, but our district is one of the poorest school districts in the state. And so our school district already is doing amazing things with the money we have, but there's only so much of it. And so I think that in terms of finances, it just takes continuing to be super creative with what we do have and working at the state level to help change state aid for the better.
Stacy.
Shay, we like have the same words on some things. Like, oh, she just, can we like, no! Can we like split up? No, okay. So mine would be, again, obviously, the teacher retention, but what does that mean to me? Is I think really, we need to be asking our teachers and staff what their ideas are and really listening to them. Because what, it may always be about money. It may be different situations in the school. And so I just think it's asking questions and listening to what the teachers and staff say. Again, the budget, my, are there ways to get creative to stick to it? Because like Shay said, yeah, we are one of the poorest districts in the state, and I know that we are being creative in some ways, but are there other ways? So just thinking outside the box when it comes to that. And then my third one would be, I'm going to go in threes now, since our first question was a three. My third one would be just parents. Are, do we, do they feel like they're being heard? Because at the core of it all, like, family is where it all starts. And our parents need to know that they're being heard and respected as well as everybody. I mean, we're all working together in this, but do the parents feel heard?
Brady Rhodes is next.
The issues for me, first off, I always need to remind myself that the two priorities that are face the school board are to approve and review, review and approve policy, and then to supervise and help guide the work of the leader of the institution, the superintendent. So it's, in a lot of ways, it's very limited. The things that I'm passionate about, that I want to see the school board have a stake in, or it all revolves around education. So that is our task. That is our number-one job. How do we educate and provide the best educational environments for our kids? Top of mind, of course, with that is how do we resource that? How do you get the money to do that job? It's very difficult in our community because it's so unique. We have such a unique position in the world of public education within the state, and so explaining the needs that we have to advocates, to our state senators, to the folks who are designing the formula, it's very difficult. So doing that job well, I served as the legislative liaison when I was part of the board, so I have some experience in that. How do we explain the situation that we're in? Because in order to do the job of education, we do have to have fantastic teachers, and we do need to keep them. And we do need to have them not stressed out by substitutes that we can't find because it's such a difficult environment. So we have teachers that we have to pull out of the things that they're doing to go cover other people's classes because we can't get substitutes. So there's complex stuff that we've got to figure out there. How do we staff the challenge of education? I think the main way to do that, that'd be a primary issue for me, is really increasing public and private partnerships. There's an opportunity within our community to have the community support the school and vice versa. We're already doing that with the career pathways. We need to do that more with family engagement, as Stacy was saying. There's opportunities there to keep people involved in schools, and then we'll find some great ways to connect the dots there. And then, well, those are my big pieces. I'll leave it there.
Becky.
I can't believe you didn't take mine. So number one, just, I think it's, you know, it's a nationwide problem right now with teachers and all staff, really. We have a lot more teachers who are exiting the profession than we have that are entering the profession. And this isn't just a Hastings problem. This is a nationwide problem. We're doing a pretty good job so far. We actually this year only had one certificated staff position that was not filled. So for a district our size, that's pretty good. But what do we do to make sure that we keep all of the people we have? I think that's a big issue right now. And I think, you know, as has been pointed out, we have budgetary restraints. There's only so much we can do. So culture, I think, is huge. As Brady alluded to, you know, we're, the board is kind of responsible for the guy at the top. We've got a great guy at the top who's working on culture, who's hired some great building-level leaders who I think are establishing great cultures at the building level. And, you know, when you're in a job, you want to be, you want to be compensated fairly. And once that's in place, then you want it to exist in a culture that supports you and helps you thrive. And I think that's what we're working on, and I think that's what we're actually doing a really good job of, that will hopefully help with that retention piece for our current staff. My second thing is, you know, I work in wellness, so mental health and well-being is always going to be near and dear to my heart. It's been some rough years, and we are fortunate that we have had some significant grant funding with our AWARE grant, which has helped a lot for us to be able to implement some mental health programs in the schools for both staff and students. We have a wellness committee that works both with the staff and the students at the building level and at the district level that's doing some really nice things. In fact, have been recognized on a statewide level, have other school districts asking us what we do. So those are my top two things.
We are going to start question three with Jody Graves. Here is the question. What goals should the Hastings Public Schools adopt to make sure students acquire the knowledge, skills, and behaviors essential to be successful individuals and responsible citizens?
That's a pretty loaded question. Yeah, can you re, can you re-say it one more time?
Yes. What goals should the Hastings Public Schools adopt to make sure students acquire the knowledge, skills, and behaviors essential to be successful individuals and responsible citizens?
That feels like something that we would need, a lot of listening sessions and input from the community. We've talked about that several different times tonight. But really getting the entire community-wide perspective, the staff perspective, to see what, as a community and as a staff, they feel like those goals should be. If we keep at the core the number-one thing of educating all of our students and really keeping that as the priority and the focus, then a lot of the rest will fall into place.
Shay, you're next.
I kind of, yes. Okay. I would, I definitely agree with Jody that this, I mean, I believe that our school district is the center of our community. It is the future of our community. Our future citizens are being raised in our school systems. Therefore, it should be the community who's helping, you know, to guide that. I think that's very important. I believe, as I said, I'm a good listener, and I believe that it's key to listen to people to find out their stories. Because your kid and your kid and your kid will have a different answer for what their day is like and what they see and what they believe. But I believe that we need to focus on ensuring that all kids in our very diverse district are served to be successful when they leave this school district. I'll say that again. I believe that all the kids in our district, whether they're free and reduced, whether they're high-ability learners, whether they're a kid that's floating along in the middle, just cruising along, doing their head, keeping their thing down, every kid deserves to walk out of Hastings Public Schools at the end of 13 years of education as successful community members.
Stacy.
Can you read it one more time?
Yes. What goals should the Hastings Public Schools adopt to make sure students acquire the knowledge, skills, and behaviors essential to be successful individuals and responsible citizens?
The schools can't teach everything, I think, first of all. So I think one thing that we could adopt, and it's probably there, because I know my daughter was, oh my gosh, what is it called now? The nonprofit that you can go in, Job Shadow, and, anyway, amazing program. And that's not something that the schools can offer, but we need to be connectors to all of our nonprofit programs that are in the community, and those are ways that they're going to be able to learn to be new, better citizens outside as they go on. So learning about where can we guide them to learn about finances? Where can we guide them to learn about, you know, different, like, how to live, how to budget, how to keep yourself healthy? They're all, I think, within our community. We have the resources, and our teachers are there to teach the basics. So, and this is me from a parent. I like how Jody said this would like be a question and answer, and see where other people think that this would go. But personally, are we teaching our kids anything when they come home? Like, I hear my daughter so many times be like, oh, I can just go in and tell them that I can't take the test today. I feel like maybe from a parent perspective for my kids, that we're being too easy on some of them. And I don't know where that goes. I don't know where it goes. I don't know where it fits into the picture as a whole. But, I mean, we don't get second chances always when we are out being a citizen in real life. So, I mean, just different life outside of schools and the walls there. Yeah. That's all I have.
Brady is next.
So it's response to the mission of the schools. That's what we're responding to here. And I helped create that mission. And it was a really important conversation because as you create a mission, you're thinking about kind of from the top down, what is the thing that we're aiming for? And then you think about, okay, how are we going to get there? So the how are we going to get there part has got to be data-driven. We've got to look at, hey, what are the, what are the things that we're producing when we say we're here to educate kids? And then let's look at that and look at it objectively and think about, how can we do this better? And are we doing it at the level that we need to? And are there other ways to do it to achieve different results? Or do we need to just get better at the thing that we're doing to get to those results and increase those where needed? So in order to get the data, you've got to really evaluate and evaluate well. That can be a very cumbersome thing. And so how do you do that with enough of a gentle hand where teachers aren't impinged upon with their, you know, their school, their classwork, the lesson that they're setting up? How can you figure out a way to balance evaluation with making sure that teachers have a great opportunity to be great teachers, which is what they're there for and what they love to do? And then you have to have high expectations. And so the third goal for me would be really high expectations because I think a missing piece in the statement is educating all students, to help all students acquire the skills to be productive citizens and educated. So making that a, how do you set those standards so that we do match the needs of everyone? I was trained as a special education teacher and had my license in there for a period of time, and that's a whole different ball of wax. So I think you figure out how can we be a flexible school that adapts the needs of all students, high ability learners, folks that have special education needs, and then do that within a structured framework that is really strategic so that you propel the district over time. Thank you.
I'm going to latch on to a little bit of what Brady said here. You know, we, I guess I'm, there is a district-wide goal of certain things for certain grade levels, but I love just when we get to go into the classroom, we do see, like, each individual classroom has classroom goals. So that class has specific things that they're trying to do in that classroom with those kids. And I know a lot of teachers I talk to are so good at differentiation and making sure that we can get all kids up to a level where they are really able to have those skills and behaviors. You know, I know there's certainly goals in the classroom for behaviors as well. We just had a presentation from our middle school principal last month about a behavior program that they're implementing at the middle school. And so I think there are always those goals, maybe not as coordinated across the district, but we certainly have goals at the classroom level and I think at the building level as well. Talking about kids, kind of as they get through, I guess, having, personally having two kids that are in college right now, I'm really pleased to say that they have felt very well-prepared for the things that they've needed to do in college. They had a lot of classroom work that helped them be able to do things that maybe some of their peers at college were struggling with. So I've felt very confident in a lot of the education that they have received, but I've actually thought before, maybe we should be surveying these graduates, recent graduates, like a year out, five years out, and kind of asking them some of these questions. Like, do you feel like you were prepared for college? And now that you're in life, do you feel like you're prepared for life? Was there something you could have learned in high school that would have helped you with that more? So maybe that's something that we could do as well. Yeah, that's all the thoughts I have on that. Thank you.
And Mark.
All right, so I'll try to add a little extra time onto this thing. So it's pretty simple, I guess, for me. I think, again, communication is huge. Transparency and empowerment are a couple of words that come to mind. There's got to be transparency from what's going on in the education. I think, I got two terms, I'm jumping ahead of my closing statement a little bit, but we've got to focus back on education and not indoctrination. And I think when we focus on educating and we focus on educating children and what should be in the classroom, then they're going to go and accomplish this mission that HPS has, and again, to acquire that knowledge, skills, and behaviors that's successful. It's not always the school's job to give them life skills. Sometimes those are the parents' jobs. Some of the skills that they're going to gain in other areas is not the school's job. The school's job is to educate, and we need to make sure that we're focusing on education as the goal.
Andrew.
Could I actually have you repeat the question one more time because I'm at the very end?
What goals should the Hastings Public Schools adopt to make sure students acquire the knowledge, skills, and behaviors essential to be successful individuals and responsible citizens?
So I'm going to touch on something that Becky had mentioned. I actually spent a semester about seven years ago teaching over at HMS, and at that time, I'm glad they still do that, they write on the board, the teachers write on the board, like, what's the goal for the day? Like, what's our objective? So that all students can see it if a building administrator walks in. So I know that's already happening at the classroom level. So as far as transparency goes, at the classroom level, our goals as far as educating students, you know, parents have access to lesson plans, teachers have to submit lesson plans. It's a very transparent process here at HPS. So I don't want anyone to go away with the impression that, you know, you don't know what your students are being taught. So I just want to clarify that first. But as far as goals go, for the district-wide kind of strategic thinking, I think we really need to expand on existing partnerships. I mentioned this already as far as career pathway programs. I was part of a group with Mary Lanning, Central Community College, Hastings Public Schools to create a healthcare pathways program. Not only do we have a teacher shortage, we have a nursing shortage, and the healthcare pathways program hopefully aims to address our nursing shortage and funnel more students into healthcare pathways. The manufacturing pathway has been very successful, the technical pathway has been very successful. I think there are other opportunities. We have a community college that offers great programs, culinary arts, early childhood development, I'm trying to think what else, sustainable energy. I mean, there's just a plethora of opportunities at the community college that I think we can tap into as a district, that students that come from disadvantaged homes, we have a free and reduced lunch rate here, about 65%. That is extremely high. Shay already mentioned we're one of the poorest districts in the state. Not all students are going to have funds to go to college, so we need to prepare them at the high school, middle school, high school, elementary level to get them into the workforce and be productive citizens in our community.
Our final question of the evening will start with Becky Sullivan. We have talked about this issue, but this question will allow all the candidates to drill down. Teachers and support staff are hard to find in today's labor market. What actions would you support to recruit teachers and support staff and to retain the teachers and support staff members who are already working for the Hastings Public Schools?
So I took my own answer earlier. Yeah, that's the recruitment, the retention, that's definitely one of our key issues at the moment. And as I mentioned earlier, I think, you know, we certainly want to compensate fairly, and we will do that to the max that our budget will allow, but we are strapped for how much money we can actually provide for that. And as was mentioned before, 85 to 90% of our budget actually goes to staff, so there's not a lot of wiggle room sometimes with that budget. But as far as retention, again, I think that culture piece is huge. If we create environments where teachers want to teach, you know, all things being compared, hopefully they want to come to our district or stay in our district. And so I think having that culture where teachers feel like they're supported, where they have opportunities to learn and grow, where they feel like their opinions count, those are going to be a culture that hopefully teachers want to come to. Recruitment, I think, is maybe an area where we could do more, you know, going into the colleges or even like starting at the high school and recruiting earlier on at the high school to get people into education. You know, is there ways that we can maybe partner with classrooms, not only in our schools, but I think all of the schools would probably want to work together. We all need teachers. So, you know, maybe there's ways that we can start that recruitment process a little bit earlier. I know in healthcare, you know, we do certainly try to start recruiting earlier. So maybe that's something that we could look at for that recruitment process.
Mark? All right, so, yeah, what actions can we recruit and sustain teachers? Is that the question? So I think that, great answer, by the way. I think those are good things that we need to look into. I think a big thing, again, is just having, a lot of the teachers that I'm talking to, and just my sister's got a PhD and a couple of doc, or a couple of masters in early childhood development, and a lot of the issues that she runs into, and I know a lot of folks that she works with, and a lot of people I talk with, is just a safe learning environment where these teachers are allowed to teach. I heard somebody say this, they said, we don't actually have a teacher shortage, we have a lot of people that are leaving the teaching industry. And I think that resonated with a lot of what I'm hearing. It's not that there aren't people that want to teach, and I don't even think that from my conversations with folks, that it's even about the money that is an encouragement for people to stay in the classroom or want to become educators. It's, there's, and I'm glad to hear at the last board meeting that I was at, that we're implementing here in HPS some ways to have safe classrooms, ways to have discipline, ways to have communication with parents. I think those things are essential. If a teacher doesn't feel safe, if they don't feel that they're allowed to do their job, if they feel that they're getting bogged down with a lot of distractions that aren't allowing them to teach, it's going to be a burnout for them. And I think we hear that a lot amongst teachers. They're just burnt out, they're overwhelmed. We've heard a lot about mental health issues and some of the stress and anxiety and whatnot that are going on. And I think it's just important that we create a safe and healthy environment to attract and retain our teachers.
Andrew.
Some of the other people appear have already touched upon this, and I actually, you know, I brought this up in one of my answers as well, but I think from a community standpoint, I think there's lots of levels to this. I don't think it's just a Hastings Public Schools issue. This is a community issue, and this is a workforce issue within our community. The population of Hastings has not changed that much. There's lots of people that are investing in this community, which is great to see. But, you know, from a community standpoint, we have to be able to support our current teachers through not just our actions, but our words. There's unfortunately been a lot of divisive language. You know, there's been newspaper articles, there's been reports said about teachers, disparaging teachers, disparaging public educators, and it's extremely frustrating for me to read those things. My mom's in education, my wife's in education, I have a number of family members, cousins, aunts, uncles, lots of educators in my family. And so I think from a community level, what we can do to support our teachers has to come from, obviously, the area agencies. Chamber of Commerce does a great job of welcoming new teachers to our community. We obviously have to have a living that's suitable for teachers to attract people to our community. I think there's people addressing those issues from, as far as having housing, affordable housing for our teaching staff. You know, as far as retention goes, to my knowledge, there isn't a formal mentoring program in place. There might be, I may be speaking off-base here. One thing that frustrated me as a new teacher when I first entered the profession was I didn't have a lot of support because teachers are strapped for time. And so I think it would behoove the board and the district to really look at a formal mentoring process for new teachers, to support them in this new endeavor so that we do not lose any more teachers.
Jody.
I'm going to echo Andrew a little bit in saying that this is bigger than just an HPS issue. This has to be a community issue. The community has to take ownership in supporting our teachers and supporting our schools. We have, Hastings has been amazingly supportive financially of our schools. We just got to showcase that last week, but we also have to show up to support our staff. That can be things like PTOs and PTAs and things like that that involve parents and get community members involved in the schools and supporting the teachers in any way they can. But also, from an HPS standpoint and from a school board member's standpoint, we have to think outside of the box a little bit. We have an amazing administration that's been doing this in things like a principal internship program that is a brand-new idea. We're going to have to think outside of the box on some of these things to really be able to achieve some of these. And finally, I want to make sure that the staff always know that they can, that they'll, that we will listen and they will feel heard.
Shay.
I'm going to talk a little bit about our administration for a minute. I think that one part of teacher, teachers feeling supported and teachers staying in our district is having administrators that listen to them, support them, get into the trenches with them, make them feel heard, respected, appreciated, seen. I was talking with the new principal at Hawthorne the other day, and he was talking about, oh, he was talking about some meetings that they were having and how he just loved the administrative community here in our district coming into Hastings this year. And I was saying, yeah, I know at one point in the pandemic, you know, I mean, I know that our administrators were even in classrooms helping teach when they're just, there weren't substitutes and teachers were gone. And I said, you know, I think that that's something that's pretty amazing about a lot of our administrators, that they, that they get in there and they're, you know, they're not sitting in an ivory tower somewhere. They're in there with the trenches with the teachers. And I think that it's important to show support to our teachers on all levels. One thing, I was talking with a building staff member recently who said, my principal told me to focus on my job and doing my job and getting my job done. And then, at the end of the day, if I have time left, I can go help with other projects. And she said that meant the most to me, knowing that he heard me, that I was struggling to get my own job done and told me to focus on that. I think the key is listening to what they need and helping them have the tools to do what they need to do to be passionate about their job at the end of the day.
Stacy.
Those are a lot of great ideas, and so now I have little notes all over the place that could be worked on and like developed ideas. So I think as far as retention for our teachers, again, it's listening, asking questions, but like Mark said, and you sometimes forget about this, but do our teachers feel safe? And do they feel like they're able to give the appropriate discipline to students? Like, are they, do they, are they able to do that without being reprimanded? I don't know exactly what it's like in the classroom all the time, but I'm sure it can be overwhelming. And so how can we help teachers know that, one, they're going to be safe and that they can discipline appropriately? On recruitment, some thoughts that kind of just went through my mind is like, yeah, making it an environment. So we have high school kids that already know that they want to go into teaching. Is there some type of program that we can create that follows them through, that brings them back to Hastings? How can we get Hastings college students to stay in Hastings and recruit from there, which I'm sure it's already a plan? But getting more kids involved, it was Mentoring Works, that's the program I was trying to think of earlier, but getting them more involved in the Mentoring Works to know that that's an opportunity. When I talk about Mentoring Works, a lot of people associate it with Big Brother, Big Sister, but it was an amazing opportunity for my daughter to decide who she, like, what she wanted to do. And she was put into a business in Hastings that she could ask any other questions to, you know, in that job. So how can we get kids to come back and develop relationships with teachers so that they want to come back in to Hastings Public Schools?
Brady.
I really appreciate this question, and I'm going to take the opportunity to drill down. To me, it's, we can have lots of great ideas and great strategies, but it really comes to culture. Somebody said, culture, each strategy for breakfast, lunch, and dinner every day of the week, and I really believe that. It's something that everybody's touched on in different ways here. How do you create a great culture that people want to be a part of? So it starts with that great mission, starts with having a high-performing school, high-functioning board, and a high-functioning administration. That's key. Everybody's a tiger, right? So it's not just the board, it's the school community, it's the town that we're in. How can we all rally behind the school so the teachers know, hey, we're in a great place, and I want to be here? So they're going and telling other people. I remember one time when we were able to resource an instructional coach in one of the buildings, and it's just unbelievable to hear the principal and the staff talk about what a difference that made. Somebody whose sole job it was to go around and help resource the intensive daily work that they were doing and give them a little break so they could focus on the things they needed to focus on was really key. So how can we do that more? That's a great indication to that school that, hey, our district's looking out for you, we got your back, we're going to help you succeed here in creating this learning environment. I'm working on another thing that's involved around the idea of community schools. So it may be that HPS is appropriate for something like this, it may not be, but the idea is the same. Schools are being asked to do so much, right? Teachers are being asked to do so much. So how can we have them focus on their craft of teaching, take some of the load off where we can, whether that's public-private partnerships or however, really creating that time so that they had that space? Last one I want to drill deep on, how about restorative justice program? A culture-creating practice where instead of kids getting suspended, not all the time, sometimes they go into conversations with the victim, the person who maybe committed the crime, and you have a facilitated conversation about, hey, what went wrong here? And what can you do to make this better? I'd love to be a teacher in an environment like that, and I bet others would too.
There you go. At this time, for the flow of this closing statement, I'm going to ask Mr. Hughes, representative, to please join the panel. And we're going to start with Stacy Wimhelm as our first to give a closing statement.
Okay, since you heard "thank you" at the beginning seven times before I got to, I didn't want to thank then. But thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. I really appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to us answer the questions, even though it's two minutes and we have to talk really fast, and everything may not be completely clear. What I encourage everybody to do is, if something we said isn't clear, like, ask us. We are the ones that are going to be representing our school system, and we invite, I'm sure, hopefully I speak for everybody, is that we invite questions. We want to have dialogue with the community and the parents. We want to have dialogue with the community and the parents, teachers, staff, everybody that's involved in Hastings. I want to think that you guys are videoing this tonight so that people that aren't able to come will be able to also get the answers so they can make informed decisions. As a school board member, speaking for myself, you can be assured that I will evaluate any issue that comes before me through my core values. My core values are my faith in God, my belief in what our Constitution says, and also keeping our students, children, and teachers, sorry, students and teachers safe and moving, our students moving forward in life. Another aspect to look at when issues come before me is that not everything is in our jurisdiction to make a decision on. I want to be able to explain to parents or whoever's asking questions, if it's not, be able to show them where, like, this just isn't what the school board is able to make a decision on. Again, I thank everyone for coming tonight, and I feel free to ask any questions.
Brady Rhodes?
I'll add my thanks, and I appreciate you spreading the word to others, regardless of what candidate you support, being able to tell people to get involved and vote in November is going to be really important. So thanks for everybody that threw their hat into the ring up here. It's a risky deal, and I appreciate anybody's courage to do that and say, "Hey, I'm going to, I'm going to give this a shot." So thanks for that. I want to just leave you with the idea that what I'm promising to do to you, I'm committed, I'm committed to education, committed to ensuring that we have some of the best quality education possible in our community. I'll be well-informed. You can find out if there's things that are going on through me if you need to, you can ask me questions about what's going on. I'll promise to look at the answers and I'll ask the questions so I can be well-researched and know what I'm doing and what I'm talking about. And then I'm well-qualified. I have a lot of experience, and that doesn't make me too qualified, nor does it make me jaded in any way. I think this is something that I have a diversity of experiences I can really bring to the table, and that makes for a lot of well-rounded perspective taken and the ability to think through a lot of issues in lots of different ways. And that's what you can count on me for. Thanks very much for being here, and I look forward to seeing your vote on November 8th.
All right. Thanks again to HEA candidates, Jay Craig, thank you guys for helping out tonight. Having been on the board for the last eight years, I very much feel I am a part of this district and have a vested interest in the success of students and staff members. In my time on the board, we have passed bonds and levy overrides, opened new buildings, expanded activities for students at HMS and HHS, implemented career pathways, dealt with difficult staff cuts, navigated a pandemic, added mental health and overall well-being as major parts of the conversation, increased wages across the board, and made hundreds of other decisions that I hope always had all students and all staff at the heart. I would like to continue to serve on the HPS board and would very much appreciate your vote.
All right, yeah, thank you guys all again for coming out. So many of the views that are coming from the community of the public schools, they're not a safe learning environment like we discussed a little bit earlier, and they've drifted maybe from their original purpose or the intent of what the education system is. So I believe that encouraging, again, a healthy conversation, open communication at the community with teachers, with parents, with taxpayers is important as well as administrators. We've got to have an open dialogue, and we've got to be able to have healthy debate for these issues to be able to help us understand and make decisions moving forward. I think we all have to ensure that the concerned parties involved are in discussions and communication. I know that word's getting a little bit repetitive of the communication, but it's just such a key thing. If we want to be able to provide an ideal outcome and give every student the best chance to succeed, not only during their years where they're in school, but as well as following graduation, I think it's important that we maintain an environment that we talked about again, that attracts teachers and staff. I think we've got to examine the state of our current teachers, and I think Stacy alluded to that, let's hear from them, let's communicate with them. A lot of them have been frustrated, I think, with the lack of support within the education system and with parents, and I think it's important that we welcome that. I think it's also important to create a competitive district. I think we've got steps to improve the safety and support of our educators as it currently stands. And I also believe that we need to preserve the values of the community. We need to preserve, I think, parents' rights. I think we need to support education, again, not indoctrination, and we need to have transparency and accountability. So I was encouraged to hear that that's something that goes on. But also, I think, a good accountability and transparency of the taxpayers' dollars. Again, as a follower of Jesus Christ, I support the U.S. Constitution, I support the Bill of Rights. I'm dedicated to hearing the voices of the community to help serve the youth in this community to the best of my ability. I enjoy and I value the investments that we make in the lives of youth that my family and I have been involved in. I think it's not only because children are important for the future, but they matter today. So thank you, guys.
On the first Tuesday in November, voters in our community will be given an opportunity to impact the future direction of our district. A district whose incredible teachers and staff and students are the current future leaders of this community, their schools, and their families. Over the past several months, I've had the opportunity to read through the candidates' responses to various questions posed to them by the HEA, Hastings Chamber of Commerce, and others. One thing that clearly unites us is a passion and desire to serve HPS, its teachers and its students. While united in passion, each of the candidates has a differing idea on how best to serve the school district. With that said, I'm confident that, given the opportunity, I can contribute to building consensuses on the issues facing our schools today. While acknowledging our common passion to serve the school and the need for consensus, I want to acknowledge that each of us have differing viewpoints. When I vote in an election, I desire clarity from the candidates so that I can make an informed decision. With that in mind, I want to be clear that my beliefs stem from a conservative world viewpoint where our duty is to hold our students to high expectations and preparations for their next step in life. I believe in an educational environment where parents and teachers are lockstep in teaching our children how to think and not what to think. Our students should not be evaluated based on their conformity to a particular belief, and so they should be given the tools to think for themselves. I believe that we are responsible for protecting our children from sexually inappropriate and racially divisive material, and I believe that parents should be primarily responsible for imparting wisdom to these children in these areas. Finally, I believe in the good work that is done at Hastings Public Schools. I desire to be a part of that magic that happens every day when teachers touch hundreds of lives. A significant part of who I am today is a result of the loving and caring teachers, and I want to give back. My name is David Hughes, and I would appreciate your vote on November 8th as I welcome the opportunity to use my knowledge, experience, and passion to serve the Hastings community. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, everyone, again, and especially to Hastings Education Association for organizing this forum, and to everyone in attendance tonight. I also want to thank the other candidates. The most basic job of being a leader is showing up and advocating for the individuals you represent, which is why it was important we were all here this evening. As many of you may remember, though, there was a noticeable absence of candidates during our spring forum. While it was unfortunate, it was not surprising given the political polarization in the country that has taken over communities, neighborhoods, and now school board races. That said, it should be made clear to everyone that school board races are nonpartisan, and political party affiliation of school board candidates is not on the ballot. What is on the ballot are names of people who care deeply about the successes of all students, the well-being of our teachers, the leadership of our administration, and the direction of our community. I believe that strong schools build strong communities, and there is no better example of this than Hastings Public Schools celebrating 150 years in operation this school year. However, the stability of public education continues to be threatened. There are fewer students entering into teacher education programs as more teachers consider leaving the profession. We face financial challenges at both the state and local levels. There's an active school choice movement aimed at legislating public tax dollars into voucher programs in private education, and there are groups of people who are deliberately smearing teachers and sowing distrust in public education with dangerous and misleading language. These challenges are real, they're immediate, and they require leaders who understand the essential role that public education plays in the health of a functioning society. If elected, I intend on using my board position to collaborate with parents, students, teachers, administrators, community members, and policymakers to continue advancing public education in Hastings, and would greatly appreciate your vote on November 8th.
Being a board member for the past two and a half years hasn't been all rainbows and unicorns, but it's also been pretty amazing. As a board member, especially over the last two and a half years, sometimes we get bogged down with the negative and forget all the good things that are happening in our schools every day. I had a chance to spend some time in several of our schools recently, and what I saw was inspiring and reminded me why we do this. What I saw were teachers teaching and kids learning and so many amazing things happening. I think that it's important that we recognize those victories that are happening every single day in our schools. I also acknowledge that the school system can't be everything to everyone. It truly takes a village to raise kids and not just a school system. When elected, I promise the following. I promise to know and respect the boundaries of serving on a board of education, knowing where and when I can be involved and when it's not appropriate. I promise to advocate for Hastings Public Schools, our staff, and our students. I promise to devote the time that is truly necessary to effectively serve in this position, to devote the time to researching all sides of an issue, to listen to all sides of an issue, to understand the impacts that the decision will have on all parties, and then to make an educated decision. And I promise to listen with an open mind to all sides. My contact information is on the district website, so you can contact me at any time. This has come up several times tonight, and I want this to be very clear. You can contact the board at any time, and we are happy to listen. I promise to listen to all sides. Finally, I'd like to ask for your vote on November 8th. When elected, I promise to do everything I possibly can to make sure Hastings Public Schools are the very best that they can be. The future of our kids, my own kids included, in our community depend on it. Thank you for your time.
Shay?
Again, as others have said, thank you for coming out tonight. This is an important election. There's eight people running for four seats, which is almost half of the board. This is important. This is our community, this is our community school, this is the future of our community. So thank you for taking the time to come out tonight. I believe experience counts. I believe who you are, where you come from, what you've done, it helps shape you. It helps shape our kids going through this district. I believe that my experience is unique and valuable, having seen the school board from what I'd say is kind of a unique, different side of things. I have years of what I would call institutional knowledge, having seen what the school board has done, all those great things Becky has talked about. I was there for many of them. I've seen the way that this school district and this school board works with the other two amazing school districts in our community. I know the importance of fostering that relationship. If elected, I will work with this board. I will work with our teachers and our staff and our students and our parents and our government leaders and our community all together to ensure the quality of education and experience for our students and for our community in this district. This election is about our community's future, and I will ensure that it continues to be bright. I would appreciate your vote November 8th.
This concludes our 2022 HEA Hastings Public Schools Board Candidate General Election Forum. Will you please give the candidates a round of applause? I would like to also thank the Hastings Public Schools for providing Lincoln Elementary to conduct this event. I'd like to thank the HEA and Ben Welch and Jay Bartunick for their involvement in putting this on. And I would especially like to thank the community members who are working to become informed voters. We're grateful for your community's support and for attending this public forum. Please vote on November 8th. Your vote will select the four candidates who will become the next class of school board members to serve the Hastings Public Schools. Thank you for being here.